All right, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Ms. Aguilar will not be here this evening. Mr. Maurer is here. Ms. Martin is here. Vice Chair Lapelis is here. I, Jonathan Form Kelly, am here. Sean O'Rourke is here. Terry Rooney is here. Donalyn Wales is here. I see Kevin Reed is also here on video, or, excuse me, through a laptop device. So there are eight of us this evening. We have a quorum. All right. This meeting will be conducted in part via electronic equipment pursuant to Connecticut law, Public Act 21-2. All participants may attend in person or remotely as follows: a computer, tablet, or smartphone at the link provided on our agenda, or via phone by the phone number provided on the agenda. This meeting will be recorded and made available on the town's website pursuant to Connecticut state law. Please note that if you are attending virtually, your screen may be recorded, as well as anything you say on this recording may be recorded. There is a chat feature involved in this GoToMeeting application. That will not be considered part of the meeting. If you are attending remotely, I would ask that you identify yourself before speaking. Please remember to mute yourself throughout the meeting here tonight, besides for public participation, unless you are a member of council attending remotely, just to keep the proceeding going, okay? Item three, we have recognition of Fire Marshal William Davenport's induction into the Connecticut State Firefighters Association Hall of Fame. Mr. First Electman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am just, I'm pleased to make this presentation, ask that Bill come forward and just want to read a proclamation that I prepared for him. I think you all had seen some recent media coverage on this item, but I think it was important that the town also recognize this great achievement that Bill Davenport has made. Proclamation to William Davenport from the Town of Monroe, whereas William Davenport is a dedicated public servant, first volunteering as a junior firefighter at the age of 13, and has been a member of the Monroe Fire Department since 1973, and whereas William quickly rose through the ranks as lieutenant, captain, and assistant chief before achieving the rank of chief in 1992, and whereas William was a deputy fire marshal for many years until he assumed the full-time role as Monroe's Fire Marshal in March of 2004, and whereas Fire Marshal William Davenport has been inducted into the Connecticut State Firefighters Association Hall of Fame in recognition of his leadership and contributions to the fire service, and whereas the Town of Monroe is grateful and honored to have such a dedicated, knowledgeable, and experienced individual who continues to serve our community. Now, therefore, I, Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Electman of the Town of Monroe, do hereby proclaim today, October 25th, 2021, as William Davenport Day. Thank you, everybody. We know you couldn't.
Thank you, too.
Thank you for the support also that you give me in my office. Greatly, greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davenport. Thank you, Mr. Davenport, very much. I know everyone on council appreciates all the hard work that you do, and this is an honor rightfully.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you.
I'm going to pass the consent calendar without objection. I'm going to ask that Communications, A through Y being incorporated into minutes of this meeting, public participation. I'm going to begin with those members of the public that are in town council chambers. Is there any member of the public in town council chambers that would like to participate at this time? You shaking your head no? So, no? I will move towards digitally. Is there anyone, is there any member of the public that would like to participate at this time? Please unmute your microphone and state your name. I'll ask one more time. Remember to unmute your microphone if you'd like to participate this evening at this time. Please unmute yourself and state your name for the record, and we will make it a list if you would like to publicly participate at this time. Hearing none, I'm going to close public participation for the evening. We have no appointments this evening. Action items: Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety Matters. Madam Vice Chair.
We have not met since the last time.
Thank you. Town Council Committee on Planning, zoning, public works, and parks and recreation matters. Mr. Rooney?
We haven't met, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters, Mr. Reed.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We actually did meet tonight. We went over five items of new business: the 2022 Highway Safety Project Application, Receipt Release and Indemnification and Refunding Agreement for the James P. Fogarty Trust, Zoom Video Communications Order Form, Revisions to Executive Assistant to the Chief of Police Job Description, as well as salaries of elected officials. The first four, I'm sure Mr. Kellogg will speak to us about, and I believe you are going to introduce item E, salaries of elected officials. All reached consensus to come to council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reed. Strategic Planning Committee, Mr. O'Rourke.
We have not met since our last meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. EMS Building Committee, Mr. Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we have met. EMS Building is going very well at this point. We've had the trees cleared, silt fence up. They had a really large boulder on the right side. They had to bring a jackhammer in and take that out, but everything's going well. The trailer's hooked up for the EMS personnel, so they have three quarters to live and operate in while this is being done. The site's been relatively clean, and I've been there every day, so as far as that's concerned. Our last meeting, we did meet, and we're starting to bring all the pieces together because in the beginning of these projects, you know, you have a lot of different personalities and a lot of different things happening, so everybody's starting to work well as a group now, so I'll have a really good report for next council. It's just, everything's kind of forming as far as how the team works because we have a lot of moving parts, right? You know, we have police chief, a lot of chiefs, you know, a lot of chiefs in this scenario, so, but it's coming together well. They're working on some select demolition right now, some asbestos abatement, things that were previously talked about during the beginning of the studies, and all the contractors are in place with that, so going relatively well. Like, you know, we've, it seems we have a good, you know, method of keeping it going while the EMS personnel are working, so very happy with the progress. Had some rebar delivery. We don't have a hole in the ground yet. They haven't dug for a foundation, but that's going to be done shortly, so, you know, it'll be starting to look like something pretty soon. I don't know if anybody's been by there, but it's a pretty clean site, so that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rooney. Open Space Preservation and Acquisition Committee, Mr. O'Rourke.
There has not been a meeting since our last town council meeting.
Thank you very much. Item G, First Electman's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first, a quick COVID update, which I actually sent out to the community this evening. Case rates remain pretty stable, around two and a half new cases per day. Real big update is just around vaccination and boosters and younger children. So I think everyone's aware now that boosters are recommended for all three vaccines. So for Pfizer or Moderna, those who receive that are eligible for a booster after six months from their initial series. That applies to everyone over age 65, as well as anyone over age 18 who lives in certain settings, long-term care, has certain underlying medical conditions, or who work or live in certain high-risk settings. And there's a more complete explanation of that on the CDC site, which is a link to which is on our COVID page on our website. In addition to that, anyone who received the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is recommended to get a booster anytime two months after their vaccination, and that's really anyone who received the shot, since it was only eligible for those over 18 initially. The FDA and the CDC have also now supported what's been kind of referred to as mixing and matching, so regardless of which vaccine series you received initially, the recommendations now support you receiving a booster from any vaccine, you know, any of the vaccines regardless of what you received initially, if you so choose. We have placed vaccine orders from the state in anticipation of running some booster clinics for eligible groups that will start in early November, you know, pending again receipt of the vaccine, and things continue to move forward. There are certainly much broader, you know, there's a lot of healthcare systems, a lot of pharmacies that are already doing boosters, and you can find available booster vaccines immediately on, again, the links are on our website to look for area, both Monroe and immediate area providers, but we will be standing up our booster clinics in the near future as well. And then lastly, we do expect final authorization next week for a pediatric version of the vaccine for ages five through 11 from Pfizer to be final, to receive full authorization. That, again, is expected to be available from multiple sources, including pediatrician offices. We are, however, working with the Board of Ed, the public schools, to determine interest from parents of running a town-sponsored clinic for this age group, so there will be a message going out tomorrow through School Messenger from the Monroe Public Schools, gauging interest in parents of having such a clinic here in Monroe. And we also have an email address for parents of students who do not attend school in Monroe to also voice their interest as well through that email address. So that's where we stand on COVID. On the online permitting system, I'm happy to say that after our successful kind of beta test period, we have gone live with online trade permits, so all the trade permits listed there, alternative heat, electrical HVAC, propane tanks, messary fire chimney, oil tanks, removal or installs, and plumbing permits, all now can be done online. There is a link on the town's homepage. If you look in the blue box on the right side, you'll see online permitting. Building permits are still being configured, as they're much more complicated, but we hope to have them available soon. These are available immediately. You can apply for the permit. You can pay for the permit all remotely. And then last, but certainly not least, some economic development updates. As I'm sure everyone is aware, the McDonald's on Monroe Turnpike is back open after doing comprehensive renovations. They reopened October 15th. Crown Pizza, which had been approved for some time, but they had some delays with staffing, as we know has been common in the industry, they are now open. We have a ribbon cutting scheduled for tomorrow at 5:00 PM at Nunu Sandwich Shop on Main Street, and a couple of applications received of no. One was from, for 571-587 Pepper Street, Caruba. I know that this council acted upon an abatement where these potential applications were discussed. I wanted to let the council know that they were received, so this would be for new construction of almost 7,000 square feet of office space and about 22,000 square feet of warehouse space. And in the remaining portion of the former CVS location in the Big Y Shopping Plaza, we have an application for a fitness rowing club row house. And that's my update. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. First Electman. Moving on to unfinished business, we have no items of unfinished business this evening. New business, item A, Resolution 21-142, to consider an act upon a resolution regarding the receipt, release, indemnification, and refunding agreement for the James P. Fogarty Trust. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 21-142, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the receipt, release, indemnification, and refunding agreement and any associated documents by and between James P. Fogarty revocable trust.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Donalyn Wales. Discussion, Mr. First Electman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So James Fogarty was a longtime resident. He passed away in 2017. We received notice recently that, per the terms of a trust that he had established, that the town is now a beneficiary of his trust. I've provided to you below the four references in the trust agreement that references town programs or departments and the anticipated dispersment. You'll note that the library would be the greatest recipient of just over $57,000, whereas the senior center would be the beneficiary of two, almost, you know, $5,700 dispersments, and WMNR for $5,700 as well. It has been reviewed by the town attorney. Essentially, this agreement is, must be executed by all the beneficiaries as addition precedent for the trust, you know, for them to disburse the funds from the trust, so they are asking that all the beneficiaries do this in a very timely fashion so that they can proceed to make those dispersments pursuant to Mr. Fogarty's wishes. So obviously very grateful for Mr. Fogarty's, you know, leaving these town programs in his, in his trust, and ask the council to move this forward so we can return this document.
Thank you very much, Mr. First Electman. Is there any other discussion on this matter? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on the passage of 21-142. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 8-2-0. New business, item B, Resolution 21-143, to consider an act upon a resolution regarding Zoom Video Communications Incorporated Order Form and Terms of Service. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 21-143, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the order forms and incorporated terms of service and any associated documents binding between Zoom Video Communications Incorporated to conduct electronic meetings.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. That was a motion to adopt Resolution 21-143. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Maurer. Discussion, Mr. First Electman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I know you're all aware, we've been using the GoToMeeting platform to facilitate our remote meetings, or electronic meetings, I should say. That subscription is up for renewal. However, based on our experience, we are looking to migrate to a different platform. Zoom was a technology that we had some concerns on initially, but they've evolved considerably since the start of the pandemic, and now that we have the opportunity to change providers without any untoward financial repercussions, I would like to migrate to Zoom at this time. Our technology department has done multiple tests with the software that was provided to them on a test basis, which they have actually have installed on all the equipment that is here in this room to verify the functionality, and they're happy that it will be compatible with all the existing hardware. And again, it's been reviewed by the town attorney. You've got his potential over opinion, and, you know, upon this being executed, it'll simply be a matter of getting some training done so we can fully migrate to that platform.
Thank you, Mr. First Electman. Is there any other discussion? Mr. O'Rourke.
With regards to the security versus GoToMyMeeting versus Zoom, are we giving anything up in that regard?
No, initially Zoom did have some security concerns. Zoom has resolved those to the satisfaction of our technology department, and quite frankly, there's other functionality with the GoToMeeting, not security-related functionality, but I would say logistical functionality that, to this day, is still not working properly with GoToMeeting, so for those reasons, that's why I want to switch. But no, we don't, the concerns that we had initially with Zoom relative to security have been resolved.
Sir O'Rourke, is there a financial benefit between the two services?
Again, our subscription's expiring with the other, we have a service. This, I believe, actually is slightly better than GoToMeeting's pricing, but as I mentioned in LNA, we're still able to avail ourselves of some of the coronavirus relief fund as this was, you know, done because of the pandemic, so we will continue to do that as long as possible.
Thank you.
And there's discussion, Mr. Maurer?
I just want to note, based off of the opinion letter from the attorney, that there is an auto-renew policy here. I would, just my recommendation would be to make sure that it's within our systems to have a reminder of some sort to the relevant department head to look at that when the time is coming around to know whether or not that is something we are renewing or not.
Right, so the contract management system that I believe I had probably talked about quite some time ago here was actually the first system that we implemented using the same technology that the online permitting is using, and that system allows, when these are initially entered, those types of variables are entered in on the front end, and it will automatically generate notices when things are going to auto-renew, expire, et cetera.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on the adoption of Resolution 21-143. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 8-2-0. New business, item C, Resolution 21-144, to consider an act upon a resolution regarding revisions to executive assistant to the chief of police job description. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 21-144, resolve that the Town Council hereby approves the proposed revisions to the executive assistant to chief of police job description and authorizes the First Electman to implement as soon as practical.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Donalyn Wales. Discussion, Mr. First Electman.
Thank you. So as you know, we've been working through revisions to job descriptions. This revision is largely housekeeping, to just update it to current responsibilities. There's very, only a couple of substantive changes. One is just making sure we reference the responsibility relative to recording minutes for the police commission, and there was some ADA language that was added as well. Again, everything else is more or less housekeeping. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. First Electman. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Mr. Kellogg, was this position always in the supervisors?
Yes. As long as I've been here, yes, yes. Yes, my understanding is always, I believe the chief might actually be on. He may know how long that goes.
I thought it was clerical at some point.
Uh, yeah, chief, we got you.
Okay, yeah, when the position was upgraded from an assistant that was in the clerical union about 10 years ago, it was made, it was a supervisory position, is now in the collective bargaining unit of the supervisors. So it has been that way for about 10 years.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Chief Salvatore. Is there any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on the adoption of Resolution 21-144. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 8-2-0. New business, item D, Resolution 21-145, to consider an act upon a resolution regarding salaries of elected officials. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 21-145, resolve that the Town Council hereby adopts the following salary adjustments shall take effect on July 1st, 2022. The First Electman salary shall be $103,895, that the Town Clerk salary should be $74,005, that the tax collector salary shall be $72,897. Treasurer of the Town of Monroe salary should be $12,365.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Donalyn Wales. Discussion. I will open up discussion since I drafted the letter to the entire town council. Over the course of probably a few months, I asked the Human Resources Director Craig Hirsch to do some research on the appropriate range of salaries for elected officials, specifically the First Electman, the Town Clerk, the Tax Collector, and the Town Treasurer. In front of you, I passed out earlier before this meeting, as well as these materials were available at LNA this evening. One is a portion from our town charter, which authorizes the Town Council to make adjustments to the salaries of those four officials. In addition to that, you have two sections from the Connecticut State Constitution. Specifically, I'll call your attention to Article 11, as well as Article 19. Those two sections speak on when an elected official's salary can be increased. In reviewing these sections, I was determined that any increase in the salaries of these elected officials, which are elected every two years as opposed to every four, there's a carve-out for elected officials who are elected every four years, but in situations where elected officials are, in that situation, the adjustment increase in the salary must be done before the election for the next term. I don't think any of us this evening take lightly the fact that it's, that the next Town Council, as well as the next Board of Finance, will have to grapple with the budget considerations for these increases. However, according to state law, it is our responsibility, if we choose to do it, to increase the salaries at this time. So I would, I would say I'm presenting you, full council, to consider these increases. The three full-time positions, the First Electman, the Town Clerk, and the Tax Collector, would receive the same increase of $12,897. The treasurer salary would be increased to $12,365. The total impact of this would be a $40,000 increase in salaries for these four positions. I have also provided the council with the research done by our Director of Human Resources, which details various things about different municipalities and what their population is, what their meal rate is, what type of government they have, and salaries. I've provided you with the current salary of these four elected officials as well, as well as an analysis of the CCM labor market and the POP and NEGLPC average salaries, as well as information regarding the collectively bargained increases most recently, as well as a little bit far back as well. This did pass LNA to come to Town Council, and I'm asking the Town Council to pass the resolution as presented. If anyone would like to continue the discussion, I'm finished speaking, so I will recognize anyone who wants to speak at this time. Mr. Maurer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did discuss this in some depth at LNA. I do want to present the same information that presented at LNA to this council, as I think it's important for everybody to be able to consider all of the aspects of this. I will preface all of this with stating that I am generally in support of these increases. I just want to talk about the procedure and the process a little bit, one part being that I do concur that this has to be done. One part being that, uh, I, I do concur that this has to be done before the next elec- uh, not necessarily before the next election technically, but before the next term starts. So technically speaking, from my reading of the state constitution, we would have one more meeting to be able to consider this as it would not be, uh, the continuing term. But that is neither here nor there. There is a way of doing this to make it possible for the, uh, vote to be contingent on the passing of the budget, uh, which would allow the people to have a say in this raise, uh, these raises. Uh, I am personally against that because of the fact that in my opinion, it creates a possible conflict of interest. While I don't foresee our current selectman utilizing this method, technically speaking, a selectman could lowball the budget, uh, to try to create it to be a passable budget for the purposes of making sure that he were to get, he or she were to get a raise. Like I said, I don't think that would be a problem in this case, but technically speaking, that conflict would exist if we made it contingent. Also, uh, the state constitution does not say anything about disallowing a decrease in salary during the term. So technically speaking, if we were to go to our budget referendums and they were, they were to get voted down, the initial budget or any subsequent proposed budget were to get voted down and this town council were to make the determination that one of the cuts they wanted to make were, was to revert these salaries, uh, we could technically do so in a vote to decrease the salary effective July 1st, 2022, uh, at that time without violating the state constitution and could revert it at a later date. Um, if we did not act on this before the next term were to start, then no raise could be given until being effective July 1st, 2024. So an additional two years would be going on without any raise. I am appreciative of the information that was provided to us. However, I do feel it was slightly incomplete. While it's good to have the averages and the amounts of the other towns and other municipalities within Connecticut and the population and mill rates to be able to compare them, one of the things that I felt was missing was a comparison of the exact duties, uh, of these positions from town to town. Uh, that being said, I did do some research on my own and I do find them to be comparable, uh, from town to town, especially, uh, as we look at towns similar to Newtown or Bethel or Easton, uh, that are directly in our surrounding areas. And as such, I am comfortable using them as a, uh, point to step off of when considering these salary raises. Like I said, uh, I, I am putting my support behind this, but I did want to make, uh, other council members aware of the research that I did and the facts of, uh, the other avenues that do technically exist.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mauer. Uh, any other discussion? Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm at this point not sure that I can support this motion. Um, we received our information this evening. I remember in the past, we have wrangled about non-elected positions and salary increases and went months and months and months of discussion on the salaries and the duties and everything that went involved and how it would affect the budget and everything. And tonight, I'm given well, well-intended information, um, and good stuff that we got, but I got it tonight. Um, in comparing that to other salary increases that we have, um, considered, I, I just don't think that's appropriate. Um, on a more basic level, I think, I'm just not, if you're a first selectman, I think you're a public servant. And I think our present first selectman would probably wholeheartedly agree with that. That's what he does. Now, I, I'm not naive enough to think you'd do it out of the goodness of your heart and would take no salary, but I'm not sure that this amount of increase, one week before a general election, is an appropriate way for us to, to act. At the very best, we sit on this until next meeting and have a, a prior discussion on it. Um, and that would, that would be my preference, but, um, I'm just not sure that the information that we've gotten is enough to convince me. And, um, you know, history has shown me that we've spent a lot more time on less important things with this. Um, so I, I cannot speak in favor of this motion.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. O'Rourke.
Um, Mr. Chairman, a question I wanted to ask you, uh, with regards to, uh, Councilman Mauer's synopsis of the procedures for this, uh, for this issue. Do you concur with his analysis?
I would say that whether or not the town council could decrease the, um, salary amount, I would ask the, according to opinion of the town attorney before we venture down that, that road. Um, I, I would say, do you, did you have any other question?
Well, with that said, uh, just wanted to, uh, thank Mr. Mauer for his synopsis on the procedures with regards to this issue.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Is there any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on this matter. All those in favor passing Resolution 21 dash 145, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those against, please say nay.
Nay.
This motion passes seven. All right. Um, we now have an executive session, item E, discussion regarding the potential future purchase of real estate. Um, it is 8:43. I am calling for a vote to enter executive session. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays. Oh, we probably have a motion. So, so moved, Eunid, I heard. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by DeeDee Martin. All right, discussion. We're going into executive session. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those against, please say nay. No nays. We enter executive session at 8:43 PM.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, explain to our guests.
Sure. Um, so, uh, what's, what's your first name?
Alexis.
Alexis. All right. So, uh, we're entering executive session. What that means is-
This conference will now be recorded.
We are coming out of executive session at 8:57 PM. No votes were taken during So, uh, item 11 on our agenda is public participation. We have no outstanding items. No matters, no unfinished business and no matters of new business that remains unfinished. Um, I am voting at 8:57 PM. Good luck in the election. Make sure you vote.